Welcome again everybody to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, November 14, 2003. We are being broadcast live on Channel 35 and on City Phone, an audio broadcast. We are waiting a quorum of ten members to begin the official part of the meeting. But on Fridays, we usually have community presentations and awards. We have Councilmember Perry who has a presentation to give, so I'd like to recognize Councilmember Perry for a community presentation at this point.
How do you do?
I'm William Florida, the Secretary of Director for the International Council of the United States.
How do you do?
Sorry, can't help you.
I know Spanish, but here I speak English for the television. Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I would... Don't be shy. Here, stand next to him. I would like to introduce a very special visitor today. It's my pleasure to present to you the Honorable Dr. Antonio Castillo. Dr. Castillo is a councilman of culture and advising president for the Ibero-American Theater Festival of Cádiz in Spain. He is here on behalf of Mayor Teofila Martinez-Sáez from Cádiz, Spain, to present a special recognition to our mayor, James Hahn, and the city of Los Angeles for their support of the Fittla International Latino Theater Festival of Los Angeles. Fittla International Latino Theater Festival of Los Angeles was established in 2001 to advance the appreciation of the diverse theater traditions of culturas latinas through the presentation of live works on stage and the creation of public and professional educational programs in the dramatic arts. Diverse Latino cultures from the Caribbean, Europe, and the Americas participate in this world gathering celebration of the scenic arts. Fittla is Los Angeles's annual showcase of quality theater, which attracts individuals and families, students and professionals, and others of all backgrounds in the arts community. Fittla is particularly sponsored by the City of Los Angeles Cultural Affairs Department as part of the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, and many of its performances are hosted throughout the city and in particular in the Ninth Council District at the Los Angeles Theater Center. Fittla provides a unique opportunity to bridge the gap between audience and actors, directors and playwrights, and among people of diverse cultures and ages. I am proud that Fittla has found a home here in Los Angeles as it promotes exposure and appreciation of Latino cultures, stimulates conversation and increases attendance of live theater among people of all cultures, advances professional training and expands the academic field in the dramatic arts, provides access to bilingual presentations through affordable ticket prices, and stimulates cultural tourism in a region that is yearning to support live theater. It is evident that this has become a world-class theater festival, and this honor and special recognition from Spain only reaffirms that belief. And now, I would like to ask Dr. Castillo, if he would, to say a few words before we make a formal presentation. Thank you.
Y ante todo muy buenos días y perdonen porque mi inglés no es muy bueno, perdonen que le hable en la lengua española. Ante todo, yo quiero decir que personalmente es un honor poder estar en este ayuntamiento de la ciudad de Los Ángeles con mis compañeros y colegas los concejales. Yo soy el concejal responsable en la ciudad de Cádiz en España de toda el área de la cultura. También quiero antes que nada agradecer al festival de teatro de Los Ángeles la acogida y la invitación que nos ha prestado, al igual que esta bonita ciudad y a su ayuntamiento por permitirnos dirigirnos, dirigirme en nombre de mis conciudadanos de una ciudad de más de tres mil años de historia que hoy está aquí presente en esta joven pero pujante y maravillosa ciudad de Los Ángeles. Ante todo, pensando brevemente, he querido buscar una serie de coincidencias entre la ciudad de Los Ángeles y mi ciudad de Cádiz. Por supuesto, no en el número de habitantes, ustedes son millones y millones de personas, nosotros somos solamente 150,000 habitantes, pero creo que hay una serie de cosas que nos une, como es, por ejemplo, el mar, nuestra proximidad al mar, la vocación marinera. Paseando por esta ciudad he descubierto también que está muy vinculada a quizá uno de los últimos grandes reyes de España, Carlos III, que hace poco más de 200 años propició la fundación oficial de esta ciudad. Y nos vincula con Carlos III porque con ese rey español Cádiz, mi ciudad, vivió una de sus épocas de máximo esplendor, que culminó poco tiempo después con la promulgación de la primera Constitución española. Por eso Cádiz en España es conocida como cuna de la libertad porque allí en 1812 se hizo la primera Constitución democrática. Cádiz, como le decía, mi pequeña y entrañable y marinera ciudad, tiene más de tres mil años de historia, fue fundada por los fenicios, por allí pasaron cartagineses, griegos, romanos, árabes, en fin, toda, un elenco de culturas que nos han dejado un sello muy peculiar y muy particular a todos los catitanos y a todas las catitanas. Esta ciudad situada al sur de Europa es la capital de Europa más al sur, somos frontera casi natural con el norte de África, es una zona muy vinculada al descubrimiento de América, por lo cual nuestro talante americano y nuestro amor a todo lo que es iberoamericano, latinoamericano es muy fuerte y es muy grande. Y una de nuestras esencias culturales es precisamente el teatro. A través del teatro nosotros hemos querido y queremos hermanar a los pueblos porque el teatro es cultura, es la mayor exposición de las artes escénicas, el teatro crea amistad, el teatro une pueblos y ayuda al entendimiento y sobre todo hace mejores personas. Por eso yo quiero, si me permitís, hacer un llamamiento a mis colegas, a las autoridades locales para que apoyen de una forma fehaciente, de una forma efectiva a este festival latinoamericano de teatro que nace ahora en esta ciudad de Los Ángeles. Hace 18 años también nosotros pusimos en funcionamiento nuestro festival iberoamericano de teatro, hoy día es el más importante que hay en España y en Europa, es el puente de unión entre la cultura americana y la cultura europea, y es un festival que está decididamente apoyado por el gobierno nacional. El ministerio, nuestro Ministerio de Cultura, lo incluyó dentro del elenco de festivales importantes, con lo cual el dinero público ayuda a la consolidación y a la realización de este festival. La mayoría, al contrario de lo que ocurre aquí, la mayoría del capital con el cual se realiza año a año en el mes de octubre, nuestro festival es de capital público. Por eso yo os animo, os agradezco y os rogaría incluso a mis compañeros concejales, a Jane particularmente, que no os olvidéis del festival latinoamericano de teatro de Los Ángeles, que lo apoyéis, que le deis recursos económicos, porque con poco la gente del teatro hace mucho y devuelve mucho a la sociedad que los apoya. Pero es fundamental para que un día, lo mismo que el festival iberoamericano de teatro representa en Europa, el Fittla represente aquí en Los Ángeles, la cuna de la cultura teatral, la cuna y la integración de los diferentes pueblos, de los muchos y maravillosos pueblos que forman este gran estado. Por eso yo vuelvo a insistir una vez más, o rogaría esa ayuda, ese apoyo institucional que ellos están empezando a tener, son un grupo de personas magníficas que están trabajando con toda su ilusión y que yo creo que pronto van a tener esa recompensa que merecen porque como ya digo, el teatro es un arte, el teatro es una cultura muy agradecida y lo devolverá con creces a todo el pueblo. Yo decía en un principio que nos unía muchas cosas, hablaba del mar, hablaba de Carlos III. Yo creo que a partir de ahora a la ciudad de Los Ángeles y a la ciudad de Cádiz nos une, nos va a unir una nueva pasión, y esa nueva pasión es el teatro, que yo espero que durante muchos años y prontamente podamos verlo y dentro de poco una representación, Jane, de esta ciudad pues pueda estar el año próximo en el mes de octubre con nosotros disfrutando del festival iberoamericano de teatro y viendo, en fin, lo que modestamente hacemos en esta vieja ciudad europea. Muchas gracias, y en nombre de nuestra alcaldesa, Doña Teofila Martínez, quiero entregarte un recuerdo de la ciudad de Cádiz a la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Es una reproducción artística de una de nuestras, de las muchas torres que corona nuestra ciudad, es precisamente hecha en el siglo XVII-XVIII coincidiendo con el esplendor de nuestra ciudad. Es un recuerdo y es el corazón de Cádiz que se queda aquí en Los Ángeles. Muchas gracias.
Just one more. And then I also have the city certificate and a book that I will be presenting to Honorable Dr. Castillo, but the certificate, I'd like to take a photograph here as well. Thank you. We'll do the book in the back. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry. Appreciate the presentation. Next, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Parks for a couple presentations as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask three people to come up: Janet, Comey, Barbara, Hairston, and Pamela Hamby. And they're here today because they have been a part of a program that the city of L.A. has recently become a part of it in a pilot, and it's an indication of just how important it is as we deal with lead-based paint, and many of our houses that were built before 1978 have lead-based paint. The city of L.A. and the council approved a plan that's based on a new state law that redefines these hazards of lead-based paint, and they're not only a health concern, but they're also now a housing violation. So now we have the ability to code-enforce these as a part of our ongoing system. These three people that are here today, Ms. Comey is the co-director of the Los Angeles County Department of Health Services Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program, that's a mouthful, and also Barbara Hairston is the project manager for the Code Enforcement Program of the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program and Environmental Health. She has even a longer title. And then Pamela Hamby, who works with us with Playa Vista and the jobs program, also is the president of the Advanced Education and Training Services Community-Based Organization which specializes in health training and outreach activities. Just recently, the city of L.A. designated October 19th to the October 25th its Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Week, and we're here belatedly to give a certificate of appreciation to these three people for really making it safer for all of our children, particularly in some of our older part of our city. The District 8, 1, 9, 13, and 14 are the primary recipients of this pilot program, and all of us in behalf of the city of L.A. will say thank you very much. Now, which one do you want to speak? The one with the longest title? Come on up here.
Good morning. And we want to say thank you to the council for allowing us to come here today. On behalf of L.A. County Department of Health Services, the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program and our sponsor of our funding for this program, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, we want to thank you for your support of our pilot program here in Council Districts 1, 8, 9, 13, and 14, where we will be working to control the manner in which we work with lead-based paint as we look at lead-safe work practices in an effort to protect our young children here in L.A. County. So we want you to know how much we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your support as well.
Again, I would like to thank the council and the specific council districts that are participating in this pilot project, and also to say that our goal is to provide... and also to say that our goal is to provide lead-safe housing in Los Angeles City as well as Los Angeles County for our children and to prevent childhood lead poisoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your leadership on this issue. Mr. Parks for a second presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to bring up several people that are part of a program that the Eighth District got involved with several months ago to assist small businesses and it really is particularly of significance in that we have a couple of items today on the agenda that talks about how do we enhance dealing with small businesses and small contractors. But what we have today are fifteen members of our community that are contractors who have had in the past some difficulty in dealing with the bureaucracy in the system as relates to dealing with governmental contracts. They, at the insistence of Clarence Manziel and several others in our district, enrolled over fifteen members of our community in an L.A. Unified School District boot camp. And with this boot camp, they go through eight weeks of training that gives them training on bond certification, public contract law, principles of buildings and estimating and a variety of other subjects that now puts them in line to be viable candidates for future contracts with the L.A. Unified School District. We're all aware that the school district is in the process of building about $5 billion worth of schools and so with that, it gives these contractors the great ability to be viable in this process. And so first of all, I'd like to ask Ms. Veronica Soto to come up and give her special thanks for creating and administering this L.A. Unified School Program and bringing forth the boot camp concept to us. I want to say thanks to her. Also to Barry Bowden Ave, who is the person that enrolled about half of the graduates and due to his outstanding leadership, which he's taken on this as a personal charge of getting South Los Angeles contractors involved in this contracting work and education, again eliminating significant number of hurdles. We also have today is the, a number of our graduates and I'd like for them to come up. Tyrone Austin, Gerald Collins, Philip Goff, Twyla Grigsby, Joe Bart, Igeek, Emma Jackson, Darth Landert, Clarence Manziel, Dolly Martinez, Darlene McKinney, Idris Matthews, Anthony Para, Kathy Page, Keith Potts, Kelly Irving, Narce Baldwin, Darwin Bickers, Dennis Loben Desmond, John Francis, Sylvester Hollins, Michael Huddleston, Anna Marie Montgomery and Reginald Wartham. These are all the graduates from South Los Angeles that went through this eight-week program. We now hope that through the leadership of Ms. Soto and other members of the L.A. Unified School District that what will pop out of the system on the other end are South Los Angeles contractors now working on schools throughout the L.A. Unified School District. I'd like to have Ms. Soto come up, make some comments and then we'll have a comment from some of the contractors.
First of all, thank you Councilman Parks for bestowing this recognition on our graduates. The Small Business Boot Camp is part of L.A. USD's effort to increase the number of small contractors participating in our construction program. We have a $7.4 billion school construction program. It's the largest in the nation and we want to ensure that we have local participation in that particular construction program. The Small Business Boot Camp program is our first effort. This was a pilot program. As you can see, it was very successful. We had seventy graduates, seventy more contractors than we had when we started and we look forward to doing this again in January. We encourage those interested in participating to contact our offices and join the boot camp in January 2004. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Also, I'd like to have one of the contractors, Sylvester Hollins, as the spokesperson for our group and I'd like him to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. President and Councilman Parks and your rest of your councilmen. Thank you for giving us this little time to speak to you. My company is called WSDG. We're a mechanical engineers and contracting firm. We enrolled in L.A. City Boot Camp and graduated the Boot Camp and I'm also a member of Cal Access, which is sponsored by Councilman Parks. On behalf of my classmates, I'd like to thank City Councilman Mr. Parks in particular and Rhonda for Soto and L.A. Unified School District for giving us this opportunity. With this opportunity, my company has been awarded four L.A. Unified Schools in a tune of $2 million. So the system does work and we're a proud recipient of those. So thank you very much and let's keep the program going. There's a lot of us out there. We can use your help.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to again, again congratulate all of the graduates from the South Los Angeles area and contractors, but specifically Mr. Clarence Manziel, who took this on as a personal charge to bring this issue to my attention and then went about bringing forth a great deal of participation. So I just want to say thank you and also to Ms. Soto, thank you from the L.A. Unified School District. We will continue to work with you and get more graduates in place in January. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Parks. Nice to see you, Ms. Soto. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to recognize for the next presentation, Mr. Zine. Is Mr. Zine ready? Okay, let's go ahead to Mr. Labange if he is ready. I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange for presentation at this time.
Mr. President, nice to see your guest up there this morning. It's a wonderful day when we could salute someone in our own city family for their work in a very special organization. The City of Angels Toastmasters Club 251 is receiving this recognition for leading the movement to make efficient oral communication a worldwide reality. Through its members, Clubs, Toastmasters Internationals help men and women learn the art of speaking, listening and thinking. Vital skills that promote one individual's ability to enhance their leadership potential and foster understanding and contribute to the betterment of all mankind. The mission of Toastmasters Club is to provide mutual supportive and positive learning environment where every member has the opportunity to develop and practice communication and leadership skills. On October 18th, 1978, the City of Los Angeles Toastmasters Club 251 was elected to the membership and thereby has been part of the city family for these 25 years. I wanted to call them in today to salute them on this anniversary and ask them to say some few words how the importance of public speaking is. And as elected officials, we know how important it is, how important it is when the councilman of the Fourteenth District gives a very important and driving speech. How important is it graduates of all our various council districts give those important communication speeches to our constituencies, to others. So that's why I wanted to salute Toastmasters. And at this time, I would like to call on one of the three Toastmasters to, all of you three, to give a little brief report and first and foremost, Carmen Stewart, who's representing herself as a Toastmaster, but she's with the Department of Emergency Preparedness with Mr. Stanley as the general manager. Carmen, please give us some remarks. Thank you.
Mr. President, councilmembers and especially Councilmember Labange, I'd like to thank you for having us here today and for us to receive this recognition for our 25 years. Being a member of Toastmasters has made me a better communicator, a better speaker, thinker, listener and a better leader. I'd like to thank all of you for recognizing us today and I can't imagine not being a part of an organization that promotes all of those characteristics in its members. Thank you very much once again.
Thank you very much and Toastmasters clearly did-
Mrs. Suki, I want to welcome and Carmen. Give these Toastmasters from the City of Angels a great applause for their work and their recognition that they deserve for 25 years. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and thank you for those speeches. I'm sure your fellow Toastmasters would be proud. I'd like to recognize Mr. Zine at this point. And then, then Ms. Perry. Oh, okay, Ms. Perry for another presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I have a very special young woman here with me today and I know she's not entirely comfortable with this, but she's also here with her parents. And this is Kathy Castro and her mother and father are here as well. And Kathy, Kathy has been with me from the very beginning and she's moving upward and onward, but still within the Ninth Council District and she will be running the administrative office of a charter school in the district and I'm really, really glad she's still going to be working in the district. But I want to say a few special things about Kathy because she is such an extraordinary young woman and I know that I can attribute much of that to the upbringing that she has received from her mother and her father. Kathy comes from a very big family and I believe she is the only girl in the family. Only girl? You got a little sister and a big sister and seven brothers? Eight, eight brothers, eight brothers. So Kathy comes from a big family, as I said, and she hasn't always- and Tom Labange is clapping for her because she comes from a large family because he does too. So he understands what that means. Kathy is a graduate of Jefferson High School and the thing that has impressed me most about Kathy is her maturity, her ability to follow through, her commitment to serving the people who live in this district and her compassion for people who live in the district and her openness, her love of all people who have the same values that she does in that wanting to help people and to take care of their needs and to respond to them. And I'd say that she's already at such a young age understood the significance and the great meaning and the great honor in public service. And I wanted to bring her here today and I asked her to bring her mother and father so that they realize how important she is not only to me but to the people of the Ninth Council District. And as I said before, I'm just grateful that she's not going to be too far away. She's just such a tremendous young woman that I wanted her to come here today so that you could all meet her as well and to say, I don't want to say farewell because you're not going to go that far away, but to say thank you for your service and I feel very blessed and very fortunate that you were able to work on my staff for as long as you did. And I just want you to know, I don't say this to everybody, the door will always be open to you if you ever decide you want to return. But I'm so pleased that you are evolving and growing as a young person and a young woman and I want to say thank you for all that you've done for us. So congratulations and thank you. Can you just say one word? One word? One word? Just one word. Okay?
I just want to thank the councilwoman for giving me the opportunity to work in her field office. It's been great working with the constituents in the Ninth and I just want to thank her for everything she's done for me.
Thank you very much and we look forward to your continued service for the city of Los Angeles down the line. At this point, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Zine for a presentation.
Next. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone in Los Angeles. It's a pleasure to bring in a couple of my constituents. Rhonda Marie Shaw and her husband, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Brian Shaw. Stand next to your wife. I don't want to come between you guys. Rhonda is a native Angelino, attended schools in Los Angeles, Windsor Hills Elementary, Palms Junior High, University High, L.A. Community College, West L.A., political science and you're in appropriate form for political science and the university, California State University System, Los Angeles, Northridge and Public Relations. From 1995 to the current time, you're living in the fine Third District Southwest San Fernando Valley and you've seen your property value increase tremendously along with everyone else out there in the valley. Married to Brian and two young sons. How old are your sons?
Six and seven months.
Six and seven months? Very good. Your dad's a retired LAPD jailer and brother, brother-in-law and sister-in-law are LAPD officers and detectives, so part of that fine city family. They've inspired you to do things in the community and that's why we're here recognizing you this morning. Take-charge individual, no-nonsense approach to improving quality of life in the Third District and that's what we want to recognize you for. What you've done not only at St. Joseph the Worker Church, where you are an usher, a lecturer, infant baptism ministry, so you're involved in your church, you're involved in the community, neighborhood watch block captain since 1995 and you distribute the newsletter, the neighborhood watch newsletter to the community. You work with the community anti-gang, graffiti, abandoned shopping carts, illegal dumping of trash, you name it, for the quality of life. So what we want to recognize you for, and this resolution signed by me, the mayor and all of my colleagues, for one of the good people of the community that takes it upon themselves with your wonderful husband staying home taking care of the children and you're out there taking care of the community and the activities at the church. So we want to officially and formally recognize you and keep up the good work because people like you in the community make the community the quality of life that we all want to share in the community. So it's my pleasure, Rhonda, that present this to you on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and all the fine people out in the San Fernando Valley and my constituents in the Third District who appreciate what you do and I've invited you to join my community posse. You're going to both join my community posse, which is doing what you have been doing on your own. Quality of life in the community, taking care of the community and at the same time raising children, taking care of the needs at home and taking care of the needs in the community and the needs at church. So you're one of these ladies that has that ambition, that initiative and I think a little email came my way to say, you know what? You got a constituent that's out there doing a lot of work. We want to make sure that the people know and recognize and it's my honor to present this with you today on behalf of my office in the city of Los Angeles. And I can only ask you, keep up the good work, join the community posse that I've got going and you'll find more rewards from it. You get your little ID card. You get all those wonderful accolades and the appreciation to know that you're giving back to your community. It's people like you that make our community the proud community that it is. So congratulations, Rhonda. Congratulations to you. Thank you for bringing this to my attention. You're a great husband, a great daddy, I'm sure. Whoever's watching the babies right now. Grandma's watching the babies right now, but we do appreciate it and keep up the good work. We're going to do some photos in the background and in the back room, but I'm going to give you the microphone for a minute to maybe encourage some of our other constituents and our other residents and people of Los Angeles to get involved as you've been involved in the community. Rhonda.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Zine. This is such a treat. I never expected to be commended for my community efforts. My parents just always raised me to get involved in the community because it's a reflection of you and I just couldn't believe when I heard from you in your office. I was so honored. So this just goes to show, listen to your parents. So thank you very much and I definitely want to join your posse and continue doing what I'm doing and I want to thank my husband Brian for supporting me and taking care of the kids and helping me in every way that he does. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got one more coming after this.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Labange real quick. Mr. Zine, on this, before you disappear, Councilmember Labange would like to say something.
Tell us, Mr. Labange.
Oh, I'm sorry. He was waving to somebody.
Congratulations to you.
But he wanted to say congratulations as well. Thanks so much. Okay, Councilmember Zine for a second presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I can be joined by the security force we have here at Los Angeles City Hall. And we have the chief, Chief Newton with us. We have some unusual situations that occur at City Hall from time to time and one of them is security. And every time something happens brought to my attention regarding security, I take note of that, not only to let the people know that we have a security force that's out there working protecting public property, which this city hall is owned by the people of Los Angeles. And they're always on the job. We've invested in technology here at City Hall. After September 11th, we recognized we need to do a lot of things to change to make this secure. secure for everyone who visits City Hall, not only the employees of the City of Los Angeles, but the visitors to City Hall. On October 26th, at 6:45 in the morning, on a Sunday morning, when most people are working, or sleeping, I should say, officers of Security Services Division took action, apprehended a person who was vandalizing City Hall's Election Division offices. And you wonder why someone's going to vandalize Election Division offices in the City of Los Angeles, what motive they had. But we have a closed-circuit system in place throughout this complex, and Security Officer Matt Valentine was assigned to City Hall and was responsible for monitoring the perimeter with the closed-circuit system. And you would wonder, at 6:45 a.m. on a Sunday morning, what our officers are doing. They're diligently doing what we pay them to do to protect this property. Officer Valentine observed a man pull an object from his pants pocket and throw it at an antique streetlight. Recognizing this was a little unusual at that time of the morning, Officer Valentine recognized the object was a rock, and that rock, when it was thrown, broke into pieces. The individual then picked up the rock and started throwing it windows, breaking windows at city property, in particular, the Election Division offices. Officer Valentine immediately radioed for assistance and gave the description of the individual to security officers. And we had security officers, George Hebrian... George, come on up here. Hebrian, who is a cigar smoker. Well, he gave me cigars on special occasions. And Robert Crump. Robert, come on up here. Thank you. They responded to the location. So Valentine directed the officers to the suspect's location. Well, obviously, when the suspect recognized uniformed security officers, he did what most suspects do: he took off running. And as the officers followed in foot pursuit, Officer Kelvin... Officer Kevin Almeyer. Kevin? Come on up. You look like you're in pretty good shape to be running. It didn't take very long. And Jorge Horta? Jorge, come on up. Arrived, apprehended the suspect, and placed him under arrest. And through the coordinated effort, not only technology, but the city employees coming together, we were able to apprehend this individual, hold him responsible for the action he did, and prevent him from destroying any other property in the City of Los Angeles. And I wanted to also note that our security operation has not only apprehended this individual, but previous individuals who were graffitiing city property with words that we wouldn't want our children or people to recognize or to see or to utter. So it's my pleasure, along with my colleagues, to present to you the certificate of appreciation. Jorge, for you. Officer Crump? George? Kevin? And show our appreciation, and all we can say is, you work every single day, and you wonder, does anyone ever care? Does anyone care what you do? Well, obviously, we care. We want to show our appreciation and keep up the good work. I'm going to give the microphone to the chief, who... Chief Newton, who's here also, and I'm sure he's very proud of what you gentlemen have done to motivate you, to get the job done. But you think, on a Sunday morning, nice and quiet, people are sleeping, and if it wasn't for Officer Valentine... Officer Valentine couldn't be with us this morning, but we do have a recognition certificate for him that we'll have delivered to him. We don't know how much property would have been destroyed, and we hear about schools being destroyed and people vandalizing property all the time. So our congratulations for a job well done and the coordinated effort with technology and the desire of our city security force to make sure that public property is protected and maintained in good order. Chief Newton, let's hear it for the troops here. And we've got Dwayne hiding behind us. You can come up here too, Dwayne. You like to be a security officer, but you didn't measure up.
Thank you, Councilmember. The true thanks really goes to the police officers and security officers of the Security Services Division, who are out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And in this incident in particular, I think what I'd like to talk about a little bit is the security technology application. Post 9/11, the city spent quite a bit on securing our city facilities in City Hall, adding access control, CCTV, and this incident really shows how, without that technology, this suspect may never have been caught. So once again, I'd like to thank the officers, and I'd like to thank Dwayne, our security technology administrator, for coordinating everything that he does. Thank you.
Dwayne, I was just teasing about you didn't measure up. You always measure up. And I know we've discussed security measures, and I know you're in charge of the technology for the City of Los Angeles, so it's your turn to talk, and your mom would be happy to see you. There you go, Dwayne. Dwayne Healy.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmen. I have a job to do. We do it, and happy to work with every one of your offices to make sure this building is properly secured, and thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labons, Ledlow, Miskowski Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vietagoso, Vice Sign Padilla, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, we have a quorum. Let's move to the minutes.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, Ms. Han seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, those are approved. Moved by Mr. Labons, seconded by Ms. Gruel.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are a couple items to be continued. There's a request to continue item 25 to Tuesday, November 18th.
All right, colleagues, there's a request to continue item 25. Any objection? If not, that will be continued to the 18th.
There's also a request to continue item 29 to Tuesday, November 18th as well.
Okay. If there's no objection, colleagues, we will continue item 29 to the 18th as well.
On the regular agenda, item 1 is an item notice for public hearing. Council should close the hearing and instruct the city engineer to proceed with the vacation.
Okay. Let us go ahead and do that. Close the hearing on that. Should we take the vote on that right now? Okay, let's open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote, please.
11 ayes.
Okay, that item is approved, colleagues. Next items.
Items 2 through 6 are also items noticed for public hearings. Council should continue the hearings and ordinances to December 5th.
Okay. Let us continue those hearings till December 6th. And next set of items, please.
Items 7 through 27 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. We have a card on item 11, but we've already had public hearing on that, so it will require motion if anybody wants to. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Reyes?
Item number 16, please.
16. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I think we, you know, 10, and I know you care about these items too, Mr. Garcetti. 10, 11, and 13 are all related, so we could call those special.
Let's call those specials, and we'll take them up together.
And then 26.
26, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labons?
B9.
B9.
Just nine.
All right, you sunk my battleship. All right, any other specials? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, items 15 and 16 are related.
Take those up together?
Please.
All right, let's call 15 special as well, and we'll take those up together. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, if we can, open the roll on the balance of the items, please. Please close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next set of items.
Items 28 through 42 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials from this batch? Any specials, colleagues? Seeing none? If we can, please, open the roll on the item. Oh, wait, hold on one second. We have some cards just coming in. Okay. 35, 37, and 42, let's call those special. And open the roll on the remainder of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
The balance of those items are approved, colleagues.
On the continuation agenda, item 43 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call this special, colleagues? If not, let us open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And that item is approved as well. All right, take us back to our special items.
Back to the items called special. Item 9 was called special by Councilmember Labons.
Councilmember Labons. Item number 9 is before us. It's the historical property contracts.
Why does it say 8 up there, too? Are we doing 8?
I have 9 on my computer.
I just wanted to correct you there. I just want to say, look at that. Not to do that. Members, item number 9, I just wanted to bring your attention to, we all talk about historic preservation and the importance of it. This is a listing of properties, 36 Mills Act historic properties, which have contracts between the City of Los Angeles and ourselves, and it helps to preserve these great buildings, these great properties for historic preservation. But, members, I want you to know, what this does is reduce the tax on these properties. It's a very valuable tool to help spur historic preservation, but it does have an effect. Do we have members from Cultural Affairs here? I think it's important, if you could listen to this, because some of you in Mr. Reyes' district, a lot of historic properties, Mr. Parks' district, a lot of historic properties, Mr. Garcetti's, a lot of historic properties. Introduce yourself and give us a minute.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Jeffrey Herr from the Department of Cultural Affairs Historic Preservation Division, and I have with me John Arroyo, who facilitates a lot of the paperwork for the Mills Act.
Good morning.
We're here to present 36 contracts for approval so that they can be executed and recorded with the county for these... For the Mills Act. We do this annually, and we have 36 this year, which is about the same as we had last year. I think possibly that I might leave it at that and answer questions that you might have.
No, no, just answer, tell them about the property and the tax, what it does, what does it mean?
Eligible property owners, that is, owners of historic cultural monuments or owners of contributing structures within our 15 historic preservation overlay zones, are eligible to apply for a Mills Act contract on their house. What this means is that they receive a property tax reduction for compliance with preservation standards. In other words, they agree to take the money that they are saving on their taxes and put it back into the preservation and the maintenance of their property.
Great. And you have a listing of all the properties, correct, throughout the council district?
Yes.
I saw that. Do you have copies for council members?
Do we have copies?
We'll make copies for you and circulate it. Members, I'll just close right here. This is a real important thing, because we all talk about saving buildings. Now, there's a tool. There's a tool to help those property owners restore and refine those historic properties so that they can last forever with love and affection that they would give them, and also the benefit of having the reduction. They still pay their assessments for schools, their assessments for parks, for libraries, for fire protection, but that property tax is reduced to the benefit of the property owner as part of our way to stimulate historic preservation. I thank you, and Mr. Zine, now President, Acting President Zine, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Were there any other questions on this matter? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
And may we have that to go forth with, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your wish is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open the roll on this matter. Close the roll.
11 ayes.
Tabulate the vote. Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Perry for an introduction. You want everything there? Introduction with Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Labons.
Members, you know, we have a... Los Angeles has a great international relationship. We have a new council general representing Japan who's here. As you know, we have a great neighborhood of Little Tokyo, a thriving neighborhood, a lot under the great leadership of Jan Perry and all the good that you bring to that. But the people of Little Tokyo and the fight that you have always given is only enhanced by the commitment of the people from our greater community. But we have a new council general here that I would like to please welcome to us here, and I would like to also ask that you to join as possible your special aide. Council General Nomoto, who is here with us today, and also his special assistant, Yuko Kaifu. He just came from China, where he was in Beijing and served his country well. Previously, he was in Seattle, the Pacific Northwest. He has two beautiful children who are grown. He did go to one Seattle Seahawk game, but he liked all the noise, but didn't necessarily enter the game. But he has a great passion for people, and he has quickly grown to love and admire Los Angeles. And we wanted to officially welcome you here today, Jan Perry and myself, and also ask Janice Han, the councilwoman of the 15th District, who is responsible for the Port of Los Angeles, to join us at this moment as well, formally, because of our close ties between Los Angeles and Japan and the shipping. And also, we share the relationship between Nagoya and Los Angeles as sister cities. A formal welcome in a moment, but please for Jan Perry to speak as well.
Thank you very much, and I too wanted to stand here with Mr. Labons and welcome our new council general. I feel very fortunate to have the Little Tokyo community in the Ninth Council District, and extremely fortunate, very lucky to always seem to have a good council general, one who cares, who's involved, who's very engaged and very involved in community affairs, not only at the national level, but on the local level as well. And so I am so glad to see you and to have you here today, and look forward to a very fruitful year, upcoming year, of activities within the community. So welcome, and thank you so much.
Harigato. Thank you very much, and again, I was privileged to go to your residence last month and present you an official welcome from the City of Los Angeles, and we had a very good relationship with your predecessor, and we know that you will be a great ambassador for the people of Japan. And we, when we got to tour Japan last year and went to Tokyo, we realized how important it was for citizens to get together across the oceans, and citizen diplomacy is more important than ever in this world where we continue to see tensions and fighting. So we welcome you. I promised you that night that I would personally take you on a tour on the Angelina, our official boat in the harbor of Los Angeles, to tour our harbor, and I will make good on that promise, and I invite any council member who would like to join me on that tour of the harbor with the new council general. You are welcome. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Now, council general, we invite you to not only visit the San Pedro area, but come out to the San Fernando Valley. We've gotten a lot of nice people out there in the San Fernando Valley. Council general, thank you.
Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your warm introduction and warm welcome. It is an honor for me to be here this morning at the City Council to say hello to all of you, per my assumption of the council general of Japan at Los Angeles. I think, you know, this year marks 150th anniversary of relation between your country and my country, and it is, I feel privileged to have assumed this post, representing Japanese government and Japanese people in this Southern California at this moment. I will do my best to strengthen and make our strong relation between Japan and Los Angeles even stronger. And using such a precious occasion, just I want to thank the city government of Los Angeles for, say, helping Japanese nationals living here to lead safe and happy lives. And in this respect, I want to ask for, say, continuous support in this respect. Anyway, I arrived this U.S. city at the end of August. in this respect. Anyway, I arrived this U.S. city at the end of August, and I already became Angelinos.
Oh, very good.
And I am looking forward to working closely with you all. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. Very nice.
Thank you.
Nice speech.
Okay, we'll take another.
Thank you, council members and council general. Again, welcome to the City of Los Angeles. Now for a presentation, councilmember Wendy Gruehl. And I see we're joined by distinguished members of the Los Angeles Police Department.
We are joined by two distinguished members of the Los Angeles Police Department, and I'm so pleased to acknowledge two individuals that I know you're familiar with. One is Deputy Chief Ron Bergman, the other is Captain Kirk Albanese. And I'm here today to thank them and also to highlight a very successful program that they created and implemented in the San Fernando Valley. They took their own initiative and creativity in spearheading a 24-hour task force that closed nearly 700 backlog cases in the northeast San Fernando Valley. On Saturday, October 4th, the LAPD Foothill Division spent the day closing old misdemeanor and felony cases, some as old as six months. This is a testament to government efficiency, doing more with less. Even in the shadows of, I think, insufficient personnel, we believe, for the police department and the budget cuts and increased paperwork, LAPD and particularly the Foothill Division in San Fernando Valley is finding ways to get that job done. Their hard work has so impressed our new police chief that, in fact, this is now going to be a citywide program. And he acknowledged the fact that is encouraging each of our divisions to think outside the box, to take their own initiative, and really be many laboratories across the city of Los Angeles. And we believe, as all of you know, that if we can improve on the quality of life issues in our neighborhoods, that helps us in addressing some of the more serious crimes as well. In the valley, it's estimated that there are 2,340 backlog cases, and citywide, potentially over 14,000. There's now going to be a citywide effort in the now designated backlog blitzes, and we think that with this effort, it's going to improve in our relationships with the community as well. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to again acknowledge our men and women in blue who are trying to address the many quality of life issues, and particularly to Captain Albanese and Detective Chief, excuse me, Deputy Chief Ron Bergman, who really are setting the stage for effective government and effective LAPD. And so, we're, I think, we're expecting to have another backlog blitz this weekend, November 15th, to similarly address those issues. So, I'd like you to all give a great round of applause for Chief Bergman and Captain Albanese from the San Fernando Valley. Thank you. And I just want to mention, while I have them both here as well, yesterday I participated in a meeting in the San Fernando Valley Coalition on Gangs, which again is really a program that is creating a really, a path for which we can address gangs in the San Fernando Valley. And last week, Chief Bergman went to two separate conferences where it was acknowledged that the San Fernando Valley has been, been doing the kind of multidisciplinary teams, working with the various departments, probation, nonprofit agencies, and the school district, to address the issue of gangs, both on the preventive and enforcement side. So, I just want to acknowledge them and ask if they would just to say a brief few words. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember Gruehl. The only thing I'd like to say is sometimes as chief officers of the Los Angeles Police Department, we're blessed with good people, people who are creative, innovative, and as the council member said, think outside the box. Captain Kirk Albanese is one of those people. I happen to be blessed with five more of them, with the Traffic Division and the five areas in the valley. They're all very creative, very innovative, and I think that's why we're doing so well in the valley, and a lot of people are looking up to us for programs that have started in the valley. Thank you very much for the recognition, and I'll introduce Captain Kirk Albanese.
Thank you. And we have, we have great staffs in the Los Angeles Police Department, and the men and women at Foothill are the, are the those that put this together and made it happen. I thank councilmember Gruehl for her ongoing involvement at Foothill Area. It was just last week that we had a press conference for a serial child molester suspect, and as a result of her assistance and the media and the community, that individual was taken into custody within a couple of hours. And so, there are good things happening, there's good synergy, and we appreciate the support of Chief Bergman, certainly of councilmember Gruehl, and any recognition that I accept here today will be on behalf of the men and women at Foothill Area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Captain Albanese, you're from Foothill Division?
Yes, sir.
We offer our condolences for Officer Tim Falco, which we're going to be adjourned in his memory. Officer Tim Falco.
Thank you, councilmember.
Your senior lead officer, we just wanted to publicly acknowledge that and convey our sincere condolences to you and the officers at Foothill and Valley Bureau. We'll be adjourned in his memory this afternoon.
Thank you very much, and the services tomorrow morning in the state of New York and a number of senior lead officers on their own funds are flying back to attend that funeral.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, councilmember Gruehl. That'll conclude the presentations. Councilmember Labange?
Chief Bergman, Chief Bergman, if you could, I just wanted to thank all of Valley Bureau for what you do. North Hollywood is a peace of mind district, and the work that Captain Sweet does, and the work that they did for any special event. I know there's a luncheon this afternoon to honor those who helped on the Bob Hope Memorial, so I wanted to thank you for that. But also, I want to thank Valley Traffic and the work that they do all the time to reduce the traffic accidents. In parts of the city where the streets are so wide, people go too fast, and you certainly have an impact on that, and the work you're doing on pedestrian and trying to reduce deaths. You're focusing on issues. I read about the work that Kurt Albanese did out at Foothill, but I knew he would do that because he used to be at Wilshire, and right before he left Wilshire, he took out a drug house in the Miracle Mile, which is so important. So, I appreciate, I want to stand and salute the Valley Bureau of the LAPD with special affection for the Traffic Division. Thank you.
It's always good to acknowledge those traffic people, councilmember Labange. Thank you very much. We're going to now take items 10, 11, and 13, and they've been called special, and we'll be doing those in a moment. Councilmember Gruehl is called special. And councilmember Garcetti, you have something to say?
On this, on 10, 11, 13?
10, okay. We'll go with councilmember Gruehl first, the caller on special, 10, 11, and 13. Councilmember Wendy Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I know councilmember Garcetti and I are excited about this motion that we jointly introduced today. Particularly, what it talks about is creating a small business committee. And those of you that are familiar with the fact that we have a, currently, a business tax advisory committee that has been in existence for several years, and we think this is going to be an opportunity for us to look at the contracting and procurement practices, which is very long overdue. And I think it speaks to some of our highest priorities, and particularly mine, which is making Los Angeles a more business-friendly city, and also making our government more efficient. The controller, the mayor, and the city attorney came forward with a, a report and audit that looked at our contracting practices, and we have an opportunity for Los Angeles to be seen as a business-friendly city, one that wants to work with small businesses throughout the city of Los Angeles. We hope that this committee will end those days of cumbersome and bureaucratic government. We also hope that help that it will look at making it less time-consuming, more efficient, more common sense oriented, and does the job of driving more city business to our local and small businesses here in Los Angeles. I'm thrilled to work closely with councilmember Eric Garcetti, who's been a leader on this issue as well, and chair of the Housing and Economic Development Committee. We both agree that we want to tell people that we mean business in Los Angeles, and that we are going to work together to do that with this new committee. So, I just ask for an "I" vote. I know Mr. Parks asked about making sure that we had participation by our other two committees, who have the largest contracting, Public Works, and the GSD, and we hope through probably a referral process that it will go to those committees as well. But as you see in the Business Tax Ad Hoc Committee that was created, the BTAC, that it was chaired by two, two committees, and then we had representatives from each of the council members, and we hope that that will similarly address some of the concerns to ensure that we are very inclusive in this process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Gruehl, for your leadership as well. Colleagues, this is an exciting day in Los Angeles for small businesses. 90% -- listen to the statistic, 90% of the jobs that we are generating here in the City of Los Angeles come from small businesses. It's great when we're able to attract, retain a big business, recently in Hollywood, TV Guide or Nielsen ratings coming in, but the meat of our economy and the growth of our economy really comes from small businesses. Now, second interesting fact, we do about $1 billion plus of procurement every year as the city of Los Angeles. And while we have done a great job, colleagues, internally in making sure that we are the highest rated fiscal, fiscally the highest rated big city in America by the bond companies, because we've done a good job managing our money internally, externally, our relationships with businesses can become even stronger and stronger. The mayor, the city attorney, and the city controller all drafted something together, calling on us as a council, and I'm very excited to be co-chairing this with councilmember Wendy Gruehl. But only, we're co-chairing it, colleagues, each one of you have an appointment to this committee, just like BTAC. So, start thinking about the small businesses in your community, and small business, the chambers and other folks who are interested should contact their council members, because we're going to bring together the best and the brightest minds on small business in the city to make sure that we are becoming as business-friendly as possible. The mayor's office, the, excuse me, LA Ops Program has done a great job, and I was proud to be able to pioneer with them, and I know many of you have done these workshops out there in the community, making sure that we actually get out there and work with small businesses, sometimes women and minority-owned businesses, immigrant-owned businesses, but all small businesses, to let them know that the City of Los Angeles has business opportunities for them, not only directly with the City of Los Angeles, but we also act as a conduit, helping businesses that are looking for subcontractors be able to find out what is out there as well. Being friendly to business means reforming our business tax, but it means more than that, and we're on, on the way to doing that. Being friendly to business means more than strategic targeting of the industries we want to attract that are the growth industries of tomorrow here. Being friendly to business means more than having a housing trust fund that will help people, businesses be able to attract employees because there's affordable housing in the city, and we're on the way to do that. It also means looking at how we do business with small businesses. But I spent this weekend looking at a number of the initiatives throughout this country that other cities have done. And to let you know, this committee is not just going to be dealing with our contracting process. I want to make an oral amendment on paragraph 6 to add the following phrase, which Mayor Han's office has worked with us on. "I therefore move that the council approve the creation of a Small Business Advisory Committee, Sback, for a three-year period to further review and recommend improvements to the city's contracting procurement process." This is the additional language, "as well as additional changes that would create a favorable business climate for small businesses here in the city of Los Angeles." And with that, I really think that we can do some of those things other cities are doing, whether it's one-stop centers for businesses, where we bring capital and information together, or whether it's looking at what Rhode Island recently did in Utah, which is that online, businesses can fill out one application instead of 26 of them to make sure if they're opening a new business, like a restaurant, they don't have to give their name and their address 16 different times to different departments and agencies. These are the things this committee can do. I look forward to your support. I look forward to your appointees on this committee, and I think that this is going to be a proud day for small businesses here in Los Angeles. Thanks to the mayor's office and all of our citywide officials for their leadership, and Ms. Gruehl as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to commend Eric and Wendy on this committee that's coming forward. One of the things, and we've been dealing with some of these issues in committee, and I would just like to offer some friendly suggestions on, as we go forward. One, I think, in pulling together the committee that I'm equally concerned with, and we call it small business enterprise, but that we never lose sight of the word "local," that we have that added to the title, because I think when we concentrate on small and local businesses, it pretty well takes care of all of our concern about minority and women issues that we can only deal with the good faith. And often, as we see many of those contracts that come through, we question how much good faith was dealt with. But the issue is, is that if we deal with small and local, it will encompass most of those businesses. The other issue I would hope we'd add in there is that when we talk about local, that we pay attention to the number of employees that actually live in the city, not just the location of the business in LA County, but where they actually hire people from, which also addresses many of the issues that Mr. Reyes talks about a great deal, about our at-risk youth and a variety of concerns. But also, I think it's important that we look seriously in dealing with why we place a $3 million cap or $100,000 contract, because when we look at the overall figure, and Mr. Garcetti mentioned, that 90% of our jobs come from small businesses, but when we can only show 480 businesses that can, basically, are eligible to be in our program, it shows that we have done something wrong in a sense of attraction, that we've done some issues as relates to processing of paperwork, and also the issue that's probably the number-one concern of businesses, we pay so late in the game that we can bankrupt businesses if they do business with the city of LA. So, I'd hope that as we go forward, that we look at those issues of employment of city residents, that we add "local" to the title of the committee that you're dealing with, but that we seriously look at this, the caps that may be arbitrary, and reduce the involvement of small businesses, and that our goal should be that if 90% of the jobs are created by small businesses, that we should have more than 480 in the program. But also, I think the issue that I'm, would also mention, and I mentioned to Ms. Gruehl earlier, is that certainly following the, the model of BTAC, I think is important, but I think when we look at what you're really trying to address is to deal with the procurement contracts. And the two city departments that deal with most of that business is Public Works, as our contract compliance, and General Services, who lets most of our contracts and bids, that they be in some way a part of those committees, because one of the things I think I hear a great deal in BTAC is even though we're making great suggestions, it takes too long to get to the final conclusion. Their inclusion in, in that committee might resolve your product going to two or three extra committees in order to get what you want done. It may be resolved to where those extra positions will allow things to be waved through committee and move forward much more rapidly. But I would certainly support that we have the committee as it relates to the number 13, but certainly would request that you add "local" in there, because I don't think we can emphasize enough about local businesses, and we'll certainly hope that you take into consideration the issues of employment and the other issues that deal with the caps that appear to be arbitrary, and certainly use the guide of how many businesses are in the city, the millions of dollars that we get from business tax from small business, and then go back and reflect that only 480 qualify for our current program.
Thank you. Councilmember Labange.
Thank you. Just a question, I have some I want to say, but Mr. Parks, on the "local." Mr. Parks, on "local," what do you mean "local"? Do you mean Los Angeles only? No, I think we start with a process of looking at LA City, LA County, and you move outward in order to give people preferences. But certainly, if I have a business in LA City that hires people in LA City, I would think they would give our top preference as opposed to a business that may be located here with a business license but hire employees that live well outside of the city. Right, but I think when we should say "local," I think, and I've often felt we should, and that's a very good point that you make. I believe there's 19 cities that border Los Angeles City. San Fernando, Malibu does border, but going from the west there, but also Santa Monica, Torrance, throughout, and throughout the south end of the city, South Gate. Those cities, Burbank, Glendale, all around Pasadena, I think have enough, there's an intermerge there. And I remember when I first started working in another role in the City of Los Angeles, my, one of my goals was to hire only LA residents. The first person I interviewed was someone who lived in Santa Monica, so I made a change because they were so good, and said, either they live in the city, or they're a city that's adjacent. Because some of these smaller cities around us, our residents live in those cities, or there's a, a close pro-
there's a close proximity to that. So I think it should be looked at in that area that it merges. East Los Angeles, the county, which comes right up to the city of Los Angeles, there's a merge there. So I hope we're not totally parochial on ourselves, because there's so much interplay between what we do in this region.
No, I don't disagree with you. I think that you get preferences, but I get concerned when we have so much emphasis on living wage, and so many of the living wage jobs are outside the city. So we're developing the economy of the inland empire and a variety of other places. But the issue should be first preference, not saying you exclude them if you have, do not have a first preference of living in the city. If they're not available, they don't come to the same standards, you move out to the county and onward. But the issue is, is that I think your first view is always looking at businesses that pay taxes in the city, have business licenses, locate in the city, hire city employees, and then move out from there.
Yeah, but I also like the buffers, the border cities, Inglewood, et cetera, that makes that, because there's so much interplay in areas, you know.
I don't disagree with you, except that if I had a choice between a business located in the city hiring city people, and all the standards are equal, I would always favor that than a bordering city.
Right, I know, but I would try to look at that. We had a situation recently where they were going to hire, or they were going to buy barricades out of Nevada, and a local business that happened to be in Burbank wanted to try to get a shot at it. We made it sure that they had an opportunity to bid on that particular process. Again, it's a border city that does have an effect, and I'm sure does hire folks who live in the area. Anyway, I wanted to just say, too, following that, Councilmember Parks, on that issue, Wendy and Eric, on your issues, which is so important, on small businesses. When I was chair of the Audit Committee, we did have this tax issue there. And one thing that if you look at businesses throughout Los Angeles, not everybody in a small business, if you walk down a street, is paying a tax. Eric, if you walk down Hollywood Boulevard and walk into every shop, do you think everybody's paying their business tax? Okay, you sure hope so, but they're not. And I saw this when I was at Farmer's Market, where there was a clerk from our tax-collecting division, hand-held, writing down the address and information from Bob's Donuts right next to Bennett's Ice Cream. There was no information. He had to go back to City Hall to find out about whether or not they had a business license. Well, in that time, Wendy, we were able to get handheld computers now that they could pull that information up. And what I'm concluding, members, is to challenge each and every one of you in the new year to work with BTAC and walk 1,000 yards in your district. Pick a district, pick Hollywood Boulevard, Eric. I'll pick a Wilshire Boulevard. Pick York Boulevard. And walk with our tax collector in a friendly way into those businesses to make sure everybody pays. Because what upsets people the most is that everybody is paying their tax, and I know it would be important if everybody fairly paid. I'm going to do it, and I'll let you know what kind of results that we get. And I think it would be good for each of us to do that, to encourage everyone to pay their taxes, because someone often doesn't pay the tax, and then it makes it unfair for those who do contribute. Anyway, I thank Wendy for your great leadership, and also Eric for his leadership there, and Councilmember Parks for your suggestion, and also our little discussion about border cities. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge. And when you're walking, come out to the valley, walk out there with me, too.
Ventura Boulevard.
Ventura Boulevard, there you go.
I'll start, I take, I'm starting the east end, you start in the west, and we'll see who gets to the middle first. I'll bet you I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Gruehl.
Yes, just wanted to add that what we're going to do is item 10, 11, and 13, or 10 and 11 will be referred then to that business tax, excuse me, the Small Business Committee. And then just to say, and I didn't mention in my remarks, to thank the mayor's office and Mario, because they have really been a leader on this issue and working with us and are going to be a real good partner. So we'll just make that amendment, or request that 10 and 11 be referred to this committee. The report backs.
That is to refer 10 and 11, and then 13?
13 creates the committee, and just approve 13. As amended with Mr. Parks' suggestion on adding the "local," and to also look at the levels, the 3 million and determination, or definitions.
Okay, thank you. And we have one comment, public speaker. Joseph Remus.
Good morning, President, and councilmembers.
Good morning.
I'm here to speak on the request that the city attorney report to the H. Committee regarding the feasibility of mending, and I'll use the word "amending," the city charter to allow cash discounts to prompt payment to be disregarded in the evaluation of bids. Primarily, my business is with the DWP. I am a small, local business. I'm recognized as a small, local business also with the Metropolitan Water District and with the city of Los Angeles. My purpose of being here today is that, I'm sorry that Ms. Chick, your controller, is not here, where the bidding process comes into play with a cash discount. And I am upset when I lose an order being low, but when the cash discount comes into play and the city controller does not exercise that, I lost business. So the purpose of my appearance here today is to exonerate the discount that is offered by vendors in the paying method. I attended a committee meeting with Wendy and also Ms. Hahn back two months ago, for the purpose of having this annulled by the city attorney.
Thank you, sir. We have another public request on item number 13. Candio? Housemember Gruehl to respond.
Yes, I just want to let Ms. Remus know that we do have someone, Marcus, who is here from the controller's office and is listening and participating. I'll be able to talk to him after the meeting.
Thank you, President Zine. For 26 years, I've had a small business here in the city of Los Angeles. I came here from Colorado with $50 in my pocket. This is the greatest city for small businesses. But what you don't realize is that we have an underground economy in this city. I was located on 17th and Central, and the amount of money that was made in these areas, and because these people are not brought into the mainstream, many of them are not paying their business taxes, many are not paying resale taxes. We had what was called the Community Development Bank, that was supposed to reach these people to bring them into the mainstream. It failed. Now I'm told that it's going to close down on December, possibly December 21st. They want to move that money over to 108 loans. Let's talk about loan grants that we can provide to these small businesses. There's a lady on Avalon who has, her husband died about 10 years ago. She took over the business. She moved the business from Central over to Avalon and has created jobs in her neighborhood. She went to the Community Development Bank, looking for funding to expand her business so that she could hire people within her community. They never responded to her. So I would ask that you really take a look at the funds that you have in the Community Development Bank and use those wisely, so those dollars will reach the communities in the area that need the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcetti.
Just briefly to respond to that, thank you, Candio. It's very timely that you said that, because I've been in conversations with Congresswoman Waters, who came out here and held a subcommittee hearing of Congress at the Science Center to discuss exactly what we do with the Section 108 authority that was part of the Development Bank. And we have tentatively reached an agreement to make sure that a proper percentage still comes to the empowerment zone, and then on top of that, that of the remainder, a percentage continues to come to the empowerment zone, which was, you know, identified back then for the Community Development Bank as the most needy area. And if you look 10 years or 11 years after the civil unrest, we have 37% fewer jobs in South LA in the area covered by the empowerment zone. So we have our work cut out for us, but we have some good news that we'll hopefully be able to announce next week on that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take 10 and 11, and there is a motion to refer 10 and 11.
That's a referral to the Small Business Advisory Committee.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And then item number 13 is a motion to approve with amendments. Mr. Clerk. And we have those amendments noted.
Yes, we do, Mr. President.
Okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Item 15 and 16 were called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Councilmember Reyes, 15 and 16.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmember Zine. Colleagues, I rise to support these items. I believe it's something that is very crucial to understand how we start identifying this city as one city. And it is true, we need to start defining how we look at our strategic areas. So I applaud Councilmember Gruehl, Councilmember Labonge, for creating a focus so that we can have that federal relationship with the Valley in terms of how we identify these sections. But colleagues, if you look at your handouts on your shelves, you'll see a map that I've laid out. It's the 2000 map of, the census map, that speaks to poverty levels in our respective districts and throughout the city. And you'll find that in the Valley part, you have quite a few orange spots that speaks to 50% of moral areas are at poverty. Now, in 1990 census, I can recall that in the Valley area, you only had one or two spots in the far end of the western part of the Valley, and a few spots in the Pacoima area. It has spread. So it is important to work with entities like VICA to bring together strategies and how we use resources to contain and deal with the poverty issue. But just as significant, if you look at the southern, eastern, central part of Los Angeles, the pervasiveness of poverty overwhelms whole neighborhoods, whole districts. So in the context of one city, as one community, I want to make sure we emphasize that the strategies that we put together does not hinder further our ability to create solutions where this poverty exists, where has been historically, for many years, an issue, and we are still grappling, the notions and the observations by Councilmember Park, and the relationships of the small business and development, and how we tackle these problems for our young people, and creating jobs is crucial. But again, as we move forward, we need to understand that we are one city, that we do need to start containing the poverty pockets throughout the city, contain them, but let's keep the bigger picture in mind, which means we should start visiting our allocation formulas for how we distribute resources throughout the city. I know it's a very contentious issue. We start talking about allocation by area versus density, but these are issues we need to grapple with for the sake of the future of our kids and our families. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Let's recognize Councilmember Cardenas, and then Councilmember Gruehl. Okay, Councilmember Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. And I just want to kind of explain what is before you today, and I acknowledge Mr. Reyes's concerns, but this, what we're requesting today is actually not just dealing with the issue of poverty. This is dealing with a statistical information. And the motion before you today asks for the creation and recognition of a unique geographical statistical reporting area for the San Fernando Valley. And it asks for this data to be recognized at all levels of government. We think that is critically important, that it be city, county, state, and federal recognition. As I know Mr. Cardenas feels, and I know Mr. Smith and Mr. Zine and others that represent that, and Mr. Padilla, the San Fernando Valley, it is a unique geographical area. It is a unique place in the city of Los Angeles. Currently, that census data is not kept for the Valley as a whole, making it very difficult for us to create a comprehensive picture of this unique area. Meaningful statistical data about business, or that is critical for our businesses, for our nonprofit, and our governmental agencies working in the region. And as you remember, during the issue of secession, this was one of the biggest concerns for our residents, was that the Valley was not recognized as a unique area as part of, and Mr. Reyes, the entire city of Los Angeles. But just as East Los Angeles has its own identity, the San Fernando Valley would like to have that information and that identity as well. We, several months ago, had a discussion about making sure that the San Fernando Valley was recognized for the amount of poverty that currently existed there, because some of the data that was used in 1990 did not reflect the increase in poverty in districts like Councilmember Cardenas, myself, and Councilmember Padilla, and parts of Mr. Zine's area as well. We think that it is only appropriate and timely that we are able to have the statistical data and make it available on the web for people to have it available to them. A transparent system that says the San Fernando Valley matters as a statistical area, its unique geographical boundaries, and that as we, as Valley councilmembers and as people who represent the city as a whole, that we have that information available to us, and we have it available to the people who are making decisions and the people who are impacted in their neighborhoods. So I ask for an I-vote today to say and to send a strong message to the Valley residents that we're going to be able to have this data, we're going to work with Congressman Brad Sherman and others to make sure it's also available on the federal level. So I ask for an I-vote today and stand in concert with Councilmember Cardenas, who seconded the first motion, and then Councilmember Labonge, the second. We had to make some changes. So thank you very much, Ms. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Cardenas.
Thank you. First, I want to thank my colleague Wendy Gruehl for immediately making sure that we move this along, as several levels of government are actually moving in this direction, such as the county of Los Angeles has already passed a resolution to actually support this concept, and this very important concept, because what this is all about, it's about getting this information the fastest way possible, the most accurate way possible, and more importantly, this is the way that we can get the information that we need and deserve the most efficient way possible. What happens if we do not do this is we require our level of government, or we'll call on UCLA or some other university to break down these numbers for us, and that takes time and that takes unnecessary money, when Washington should be able to do this for us, so that we can start serving you better immediately after every census that occurs every 10 years. And ladies and gentlemen, this is really what this is about, is what secession was all about. Secession was about our fair share in different parts of the city, and the San Fernando Valley is a very vibrant and very important part of the city. And what this information is going to be able to do is allow the San Fernando Valley, as well as the rest of Los Angeles, to see itself, to see each other as different parts of the city as being fair and equitable with each other. This information, very basically, will give us these kinds of things. It will give us parks dollars in the right places, and appropriately so. It will give us senior food programs in the right parts of the city in a fair and equitable manner. To me, this is motherhood and apple pie, this ability for a community to be able to say, this is our fair share, and this information is the best way for us to get it quickly, accurately, and efficiently, so that we can put that money out into the community. And equally important, these programs that this money comes to, most of this money actually comes down into the community, and we work with community organizations within each component of Los Angeles to put these programs on the street, to put the food in front of these seniors, to put the playgrounds where the children can play. And I also want to note, I want to thank my colleague, Councilman Reyes, for joining us in agreeing that this is the fair and equitable and right thing to do, because what is right for the Valley is right for the east side, the south side, for central Los Angeles, for all of Los Angeles. This is the kind of thing that makes us all get along better, when we see the truth immediately, and we can display that truth, and we can act on that truth. So once again, thank you very much, Wendy Gruehl, for acting on this quickly, and obviously we're making some corrections, but the bottom line is, we're sending a message to Washington. We need this information. We deserve it. We think you can do it for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Parks, and then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also stand in support of this motion, but I also would like to ensure that as we look citywide, that we have the same concern for the uniqueness of every part of the city. Just in the last 10 years in South Los Angeles, we've lost 38% of our jobs, and that has to play into the role of talking about statistics. Just recently, in the Economic Roundtable, they show in South Los Angeles, it's seven people for every job, where in most parts of the city, it's four and below. And so I think when we look at these statistics, we need to make sure that it's a balance throughout the city, that we're taking in the uniqueness of the city, and also the fact that we're not a city unless we're addressing all of the eels of the city, and that we should not have a separate set of statistics that did not have universal appeal and universal application for all of the issues within the city. And so I would just say that I support it, but I think whatever we do in one part of the city as it relates to evaluating what the the city as it relates to evaluating what the issues are, what we're using to maybe drive the resources, what we may use to evaluate block grant money, whatever we're using, that we use it in a composite for the whole city, so that we can ensure this, at least a fair evaluation. Sometimes, as we know, equal shares are not fair shares, and so we need to make sure that we're evaluating apples with apples throughout the city.
Mr. Labange snuck in right there before you, Mr. Reyes, for his first time, and then Mr. Reyes for a second.
Oh, thank you very much. I think it's just real important, Wendy, as you said, but Councilman Parks said, you have the whole city, but I think if you also look at regions, and I'm a great believer in regionalism as far as how we look at government, to look at things. And Tony, when you spoke about fair share, Tony, it's very important to try to give everybody their fair share, but not everybody's going to get their fair share, but we should be fair to everybody. Because as we all know from big families, you're one of 12, correct? One of 11. Did you get your fair share?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, and that's something I just want to say, I'm seven of eight. I didn't always get my fair share. I remember my brother Bobby sold me a pair of pants for 10 bucks, that my mother bought for seven, you know, and I still kid him to this day. But I think it's real important that you get statistical information and you look at it in a regional approach, and the greater San Fernando Valley and how it has affected, and the central part of Los Angeles and how it's affected, and the south side of Los Angeles, and west Los Angeles, and the harbor and the gateway communities. It's so important. And members, when we take time, and this is an important map, because you see things that are so important, to look at the whole city as a whole, and the pockets in North Hollywood of poverty that are in 50% or more, where the Hollywood Community Redevelopment Agency is working to try to make a difference, and the pockets in the central part of the city, in the south part of the city, and areas that we have to address, and even in west Los Angeles, they show pockets of poverty near Sotel and Sepulveda. I think it's real important to be always knowledgeable, and sometimes we, because we're all so jamming busy, to take time to look at statistical information. Because you know what's interesting, Mr. President? On Monday mornings after the Sunday games, they break down those films from those football games that those players play on that team that we want to one day get back to Los Angeles, and they look at what is the tendencies and how to improve on that, and the statistics help us do that. So I wanted to comment and compliment Wendy McGrew for this here, on this, but I think we look at the whole area, and certainly look at the whole city, because we're all one city, but it's important to look at it regionally, because regional government, I think, is something that we should focus on more. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, and Councilmember McGrew, when I raised this issue, it wasn't just in reference to poverty, it's more as a reference to the whole dynamics of how we're dealing with these challenges of improving our areas. Mr. Cardenas, Councilmember McGrew, I just need to share this with you. Can you give Mr. Cardenas' attention for a second? You should know that as we're waiting for this to be established, you do have, through the Community Improvement Planning Area, SEPA, the whole area is categorized in San Fernando Road, in this whole San Fernando Valley. So you have statistics for the whole San Fernando area, so for VICA and the other groups that are pushing to make this happen, we can get them information now through the SEPA program, because actually have data that talks about how you get monies, not just for poverty, for business, development, et cetera, et cetera. And your area planning commissions, the planning department's broken up into two parts of the valley, there you can also get statistical information. So if you're going through a grant process or applying for federal funds, those types of data sets are available to you through the SEPA process. But you're right, if the federal government recognizes one area, it creates a smoother transition to get to those projects.
It's also the state who should be able to give us information, hasn't been giving it to us, and this allows us to also push them to provide some of that additional data that we may not have on the local level.
I know, that's extraordinary, because they already have the San Fernando Valley as a statistical area. It's already set up, so it's a matter of whose buttons you're pushing.
That's right. So we want to push a few buttons today.
Thank you, colleagues. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item 26, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay. Item 26, Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, this item came from our BTEC recently, and one of the things I just wanted to add one amendment to it, that it basically is giving a 20% use tax incentive program, that we should make it mandatory that any successful, or any bidder in a city contract is also mandatory that they are included in this program. And that would be just a technical amendment to this report.
Thank you for that amendment, Mr. Parks, without objection. And seeing nobody else wishing to be heard, let us open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That item is approved as amended. The next item, please.
Item 35, called special, and as much as there are cards submitted from the public.
Okay. Item 35 is before us. We have a public speaker card, Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Please come forward for item number 35.
On item number 35 concerning the public works in communication of the rural education, I would like to give my couple comments concerning, I'm against constructing a new police station in the Chatsworth area of anywhere and transferring our officers from Venice area, area to Chatsworth, California, during the 1998 rampant corruption of police officers faking doing X Street Boulevard Park timing in office. It is not clear as of now where these officers are being used, whether it's Chatsworth in the New Village North or here, and not hiring the youth and not the relatives of these officers. There must be respect, new methods and new plans of how we are hiring, and where we are hiring, and who we are hiring, if we do build a new building for our police officers. With new people coming in, would not have to be related to ex-police officer. I'm also with how we are hiring on a computer or internet. I am against putting my resume, which I have over eight times now, on a computer, because they are not calling us. I've been looking for jobs recently, and I'm not being called, I went to 700th Street, and I believe it's Temple Street, and they have not called us as of yet. Very much against if we put our resume on the computer, that they can do some kind of illegal things as of now, who gets a job? Because I'm putting my background of all of my skills. Now they can take that out of the computer, and now someone can walk in with my resume, which is another person. And now they the resume, and now I don't get a job. Now it's doing illegal hiring in Los Angeles. We are with building new buildings. I'm not with redevelopment. We are with the small businesses being, coming up, but who's getting hired? Who's getting these buildings? So I'm against hiring people because you're related to a rich person. Are you related to Chief X Street Boulevard Park, so you get the job, whether it's in government jobs or whether it's in regular business jobs? We are qualified people, but it's got to be another way we are hiring people. So as of the building, and as of doing it in Chatsworth area, no, I'm really against it. Too much corrosion, there's too many fires, there's too many illegal ways we're being hired. I'm with Southwest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let us open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item is approved. Next item, Mr. Chair.
Item 37, called special, and as much as there are cards from the public.
Okay. We have a public speaker card for item 37 as well. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, if you'd like to step forward for item 37, please. Thank you.
Again, my name is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, concerning item number 37, as declaring the 35th homecoming football game on November 20, November 7, 2003, of a special event, where you're asking the city to donate, I'll give $6,373, helping to share our state government monies to any affair of awards, a football event, or any talent or modeling show event. It's part of why United States of America is one of the most giving and friendly states in the world. But at the timing of the floods and the falling of houses, and there's no transportation of MTA, the protection of police officers and the layoffs of all kinds of small businesses and big businesses, and the high prices of airport costs, the high prices of school tradition, uniforms that is costing hundreds of dollars for each school, each district, each state. I believe these things can wait until a later date, or maybe after the war, we are in the middle of the war, I believe it could wait until maybe the year 2007 or 8. After things are actually completed, as in the war, I believe in independence of each person paying for their own ticket, for their own uniform, for their own suit or whatever, whether we are invited as a group or people going to the new musical, to the Staples Center. I believe we should not just go as a group where one of the council affects everybody. I think we should teach the United States of America people independence, where we pay for our own ticket, not just one person or bishop, now he pays for all the congregation. We're not teaching the United States of America independence. Well, I believe in independence, that we should pay for our own ticket, and not that I'm related to Kennedys, and now everything free. I'm not, I believe in a free world. Freedom, there has, there's a cost for freedom. So I'm against just throwing everything free to everybody and throwing a reward, and then rewarding them. I believe that we should teach our kids independence from the parents, that we may, that this may not be a codependent nation. We was 97% codependent nation before the year 2000, and these things are changing. We have to be independent nation from one another. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item, colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll open the roll, please. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item is approved as well. Next item, please.
Item 42, called special, and as much as there are cards from the public.
Okay. Thank you. We have one more public speaker card on this as well, Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, if you'd like to come forward on item 42. Thank you.
Probably on item 42, it's really basically the same thing as concerning the running and walkathon of these special events. I'm with the special events again, but I'm definitely against one person paying for all, which we're not teaching them how to pay for their own ticket. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins, for your input on that. Seeing no other colleagues wishing to be heard on this, if you'll please open the roll, Madam Clerk. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item is approved as well. Next item, please.
Mr. President, special one has been introduced by Councilmember Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Parks and Perry, and the city attorney will speak to the need to make the findings.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, a severe rainstorm damaged numerous homes and businesses in the Watts community. Immediate action is required for the council to express its concern that the emergency preparedness department coordinate several city departments in cooperating with the county's community assistance center. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider the substance of motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Colleagues, does anybody wish to be heard on the making, sorry, on the findings? If not, if we can please open the roll on the findings, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
All right. Under the findings, this is Rule 23, and it is before us. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm sure we're all aware by now after watching the news, although I'm not sure even I was aware until I actually set foot in the community of Watts on Wednesday evening, the extent of the damage. We basically had the worst storm in 100 years to hit Los Angeles, and it parked itself over the community of Watts for three hours and did not move. There were parts of the city that didn't even get rained on, and this community was having about three inches of rain and hail an hour. This community got, in one evening, almost half the rainfall that we as a city get annually, and our infrastructure just could not support it. Our storm drains could not support it. It was basically a flash flood system that, when it was all over, had left hundreds of homes soaked. People's carpeting is right now still standing in water. Many people's beds, furniture were ruined. We have a real devastation in the community of Watts, and this motion basically is going to ask our city departments to begin cooperating with and reporting to a one-stop center that Yvonne Burke has set up and Congresswoman Maxine Waters has set up at Imperial and Normandy. So we begin coordinating our services for all the residents, both county and city, that have been severely impacted by this. I'm also asking that our housing department try to identify some immediate funding for relocation assistance, as some people actually will not be able to stay in their homes. And I asked Anna to come here representing the Department of Emergency Preparedness, just to ask, answer a few questions, and maybe you can tell us right now, what is being done, what you see as being the major assistance that will be available to residents in the next week, and how you see your department coordinating all the department's response.
Certainly, Anna Burton, Anna Burton with the Emergency Preparedness Department. That evening, the fire department was the first on scene for their response, and they were the ones that called out the American Red Cross, which is their primary, one of their primary calls that they make, and the American Red Cross set up the evacuation sites. At these sites, they're already handing out coupons and vouchers for victims of disaster to not only stay in motels or other sites for some of the longer term, but also for them to purchase new clothing and immediate necessities that their families need. For the long term, primarily, most of the structures that were damaged were individual homes. So those individuals, as soon, we met with the governor's Office of Emergency Services this morning, and they are going to recommend today to the governor that he declare a state of emergency. Given that, public assistance and individual assistance will then be available, and the primary form of assistance in that case will be the Small Business Administration Loan Program. And those then victims, the offices will be set up very near or in the damaged areas, and they will then be able to apply for low-interest loans to recoup some of their losses. The primary thing they look at in that instance is non-insured losses, so they'll be looking at the amount of loss that the homeowners have, whether or not there was insurance, and then how much through an individual loan application they'll be eligible to apply for. And that will be directly through the state and with the victims. The city is just, will assist in setting up a site at the locations, and that's where our part ceases.
One of the other things this motion does is ask, of course, for a complete damage assessment of this community, and that's one of the things I learned, this is my first disaster as a councilwoman to go through, some of you also have already had some disasters in your communities, but I learned that before we can get the kind of assistance we need, we have to have a full damage assessment, and so far, I've been a little disappointed at the initial assessment, because as you said, someone would have to actually call in if they had structural damage to our Department of Building and Safety, and I think a lot of people were literally traumatized by this disaster, and I'm not sure they would know to call 311 or to call our Department of Building and Safety. What else can we do to begin assessing the kind of structural damage that I saw with my own eyes? I saw someone whose entire front porch had collapsed as a result of the strength of the hail that night. So what else can we do as a city to assess this damage without waiting for people to call in and tell us about it?
Initially, the fire department or responding department within the city, if they see structural damage, they will call Building and Safety and they will go out, which we're very familiar with in earthquakes, to look at the type of damage, whether or not the building is then safe and secure, and whether it not needs to be tagged for people to be allowed even to go back into it. In this case, the fire department, from what we've been told, did not call Building and Safety, they did not observe any structural damage at the sites that... Safety, they did not observe any structural damage at the sites that they were at during their response. So Building and Safety now has five inspectors at the damage assessment center, and they'll continue to staff that over the weekend. But other than educating the public and posting information, perhaps better use of the media during some of the press releases, if there is structural damage, where the victims should call within the city of Los Angeles, and then if they're outside the city, their respective organizations or agencies that can assist them in that way.
One of the things I would suggest is, I know this Saturday, we were going to have our street services department is going to be going out and helping people clean up by picking things up off their lawn. Maybe it's a good idea for that department, because they're really going to be going street by street. I don't think the fire department was going street by street Wednesday night. They were really responding to some of the major accidents that were taking place because the signals were out, and, you know, literally, people abandoned their cars Wednesday night. They were fleeing for their lives. These cars were floating down the street. So I think that's kind of where the fire department was more, I think, on the major streets, and I don't think they were going block by block, street by street. So one of, one of my suggestions is that you get together with Bill Robertson from Street Services, and maybe on Saturday, as he's going, his crews are going block by block, they could maybe report back some.
We'll work directly with the Department of Public Works. Another call that the fire department made was to the Department of Transportation to tow any of those vehicles that were blocking streets, and they responded immediately to that, to get them out of the way in order to access those areas.
You know, that was another issue I was told, because I was there Wednesday night, we were actually helping to push and tow cars out of the way. We were telling people that night that we were just towing their cars off to the side of the road so we can make the streets passable. But Thursday morning, when people showed up to get their cars, a lot of them couldn't find their cars. So I was wondering what kind of communication we're giving to people in terms of where we towed those cars.
We'll work with Department of Transportation to find out how they make those notices and how they determine where to take those vehicles.
Okay, if you could really work on that, and I would be in favor of, again, since this is an emergency situation, I would not like to see some of those people pay towing fees or impound fees. Again, this was a disaster, and I would be in favor of doing something to waive those kinds of fees.
I'll make sure we work with DOT on that.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Thank you for your leadership on this. I'd like to recognize next, Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to rise and say a couple of things in terms of this issue. One is I appreciate Councilmember Hahn's leadership on this. Colleagues, as you remember, not too long ago, just a few weeks ago, in fact, we had a localized disaster in my district, where there was a pipe that broke, some 30,000 gallons of water flooded the area. And I just wanted to mention that I think the councilwoman, in terms of just expressing her frustration, obviously not directed at the individual city here, but collectively, I want to encourage the city to dig a little deeper, to recognize that the disasters that happen at a block level, to the people that live on that block, it's a disaster of man's proportion. Homes being ruined, lives being impacted, and I think our programs have, by and large, been focused on a large regional level, getting us ready for, you know, calamities of astronomical proportion, these that are localized, that encompass a few block radius or maybe a mile square radius. That is not something I feel we're ready for. And so I support Councilmember Hahn's effort to work, what sounds like with our state officials she's working with, our national officials, to do anything we can as a city to bring resources in to mitigate the dynamic that's happening today. But also, this is now the second time in just a matter of two months that this city has seen localized disasters, and I hope all the city departments are recognizing that this won't be the last time, and we've got to make sure that we are ready on a triage basis with as much infusion of resources, as a focused effort to make sure that whether it's a sewer line break, a water line break, or who would have figured, snow in Watts and hail and rain and what have you, but it could happen. Airplanes that have fallen in certain neighborhoods, all of these are localized disasters, and we've got to get ready, I think, in a much larger fashion than we are. So thank you, Councilwoman Hahn, for digging in on this issue. Obviously, no pun intended, but for getting involved in trying to push the city to respond and bring some relief to the residents who are there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I was going to ask Dave Law from Building and Safety to come up, and maybe in case people are watching this program right now, to talk about what Building and Safety is doing. And, you know, while I may feel some frustration, and I do think ultimately, we might need to do a better job out of the gate of coordinating all the departments to respond, because I was on the phone myself, you know, calling DOT and, you know, some others to say, I don't think you know about this, get out here. So I think there needs to be some way we do, we do that better out of the gate. But I must say, yesterday, all of our departments were really incredible. DWP, you know, had like 36 crews just in one neighborhood trying to get the lights back on. Street Services was there Wednesday night, trying to clear our streets of the debris. They're actually going to help people to clean up on Saturday. Who am I leaving out? Fire Department was awesome, the Police Department was excellent, and I know, we're going to hear from Building and Safety, you guys are out there too, so I just think maybe out of the gate, I got frustrated, because it just didn't seem like there was coordination. So Dave, why don't you tell us what Building and Safety are doing?
Yes, we're actually at the Coordination Center, which is down in the district. I believe it's located on the corner of Imperial and Normandy. We do have a team of inspectors and engineers down there at this time. They're fielding questions, giving information, general information, and hopefully more specific information as it comes, how to deal with any damage on the, on their premises. We will have a workstation there today, tomorrow, and if necessary, Sunday, to assist with this particular issue.
So I know that my office in Watts is just being inundated with calls about that. Should I then refer them to you, or maybe we could get somebody to come up in our Watts office too, from Building and Safety, and just kind of hang out there for a while, because I know a lot of people are flooding in my office as well?
We'll work out the details of that with your office.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And again, I really just introduced this motion to make sure that we formalize our city departments, working with the county and the state in this, what is, I think, going to turn out to be really a worse disaster than people thought in the beginning, and we're going to work together to try to bring all the needed resources we can in the forms of launches, loans, or whatever. But I'm not going to be happy until I know that those individuals who have soggy carpet right now ultimately can get that out and get that replaced. I don't know what it would be like to have my children walking around on soggy carpet for anything more than a day. I think it's a health issue, this is a public safety issue, and I want to ultimately quickly to bring relief to these families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labange.
Ms. Hahn, to compliment you, I saw you on the late news, working around. I know there was one news camera said we had to catch up with Janice Hahn, because she's working in the area, and it's an amazing phenomenon, because some of us were in a building with no windows at the county in meetings, and we had no idea absolutely what had taken place. And I think what's interesting, that we listen to our engineers when they come in and talk about projects, that this is a 100-year project to deal with it, or a 75-year, 50-year on storm drain issues. It's absolutely phenomenal that took place where the one cell just stood in the center part of the city at Watts, and unfortunately caused some great damage to there. So, and it was amazing too, because there was nothing in the San Fernando Valley and in the northwest, northeast part of the city, and it really was some amazing act that took place there. I just wanted to say, too, sometimes we don't know what's happening right when it happens, and it takes that assessment, and the methodical response, which is important, the methodical response to a situation, so that people do get the services necessary. And I think it's real important, and then Martin, as you said, when there's an earthquake, we all kind of feel it, but when there's a 9.9 Richter scale problem on a block, or Janice, when you said it's in a small community, not everybody feels it, and it becomes where we really, really, really need to be there. And I almost say, too, Janice, in the future, we should on these kind of situations, because there's nothing better than when there is a problem, that the good, the good comes to help, that we have a call out for those to come in to help in some organized fashion, and often that's the case with the Red Cross, which does a wonderful job. So I thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Hahn.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't leave out our Department of Public Works. They were absolutely fabulous, and Wednesday night late, I was on the phone personally to Valerie Shaw at home, and she was able to help coordinate a lot of the services that we had that night. So I just want to remember to thank everybody who really did answer our call for help. The community of Watts is very grateful, but we can't stop now, we got to stay with them, again, until every family feels like their life has been repaired.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, or maybe a representative of EPD, if there are citizens that would like to volunteer their efforts to help with anything, should they be in contact with any city entity?
For volunteering, I would suggest they notify their local Red Cross chapter and volunteer their services through there, and they have an expansive volunteer program.
Great, well, we encourage any folks interested in that to join with the Red Cross to help out, and thank you again, Ms. Hahn, for your strong leadership on this. Okay, colleagues, nobody else wishing to be heard? Let's open the roll, Madam Clerk. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Labange? Help for an introduction, Mr. Labange.
Thank you. From our wonderful Angelitas, they have a group that's come from Korea who's visiting us right here, and they're standing and observing our council activity. I hope you go up to the top of City Hall and see the Tom Bradley Room and the beautiful view from the top. Please welcome this delegation from South Korea. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome. It's an honor to have you here today. Thank you very much. Let's do forthwith on Special One as well, to make sure that we get that help out there to Watts as soon as possible. All right, next item, please.
Now would be time for public comments.
Okay, now it's time for public comment. We have one public comment card, and excuse me if I mispronounce the name for Sarah Crox here. If Sarah would like to step forward, now is the time for public comment on items not on the agenda, but within our authority as the city. And you have three minutes to make your comments. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council President, and honorable council members. My name is Sarah Cook, and I came here today with my friend Lisa Lee, because we are very concerned about the severe human rights abuses taking place in Guangzhou, Los Angeles's sister city in China. For the past four years, residents of Guangzhou and people across China have been brutally persecuted simply because they practice Falun Gong, a peaceful mind-body practice whose principles of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance, and gentle exercises have helped millions of people around the world improve their health, calm their minds, and live a more fulfilling life. The persecution against women and children in Guangzhou has been especially brutal. The following is one woman's story. Luo Jixiang from Guangzhou began practicing Falun Gong in 1997. On November 22nd, 2002, nearly one year ago, she and her husband were arrested from their apartment and taken to the Haizhu Detention Center. When the police found out that she was three months pregnant, instead of releasing her, they sent her to a local drug rehabilitation center where she was tortured. She died on December 4th, less than two weeks since her detention began. When Luo Jixiang was killed, she was just 28 years old, only four years older than myself. But this young woman's life and the life of her unborn child were cut short simply because of her belief in Falun Gong. Sadly, Ms. Luo's case is not an isolated incident, but just one of many similar stories. The persecution of Falun Gong is continuing in China as we speak, and in Guangzhou alone, thousands of Falun Gong practitioners, fathers, mothers, children, and grandparents are being persecuted. In the interest of promoting a continuing healthy relationship between our cities, and moreover, out of responsibility to ordinary citizens like ourselves in Guangzhou, Ms. Lee and I ask that the council take the following actions to help stop these atrocities and save the lives of women like Luo Jixiang. Please put this issue on the agenda for further discussion, and please ask officials in Guangzhou to discontinue these abuses immediately. They are morally reprehensible and do not promote the needed trust between our cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cook, and I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, but thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate that. This closes public comment. Mr. Labange is going to speak with you as well. This closes public comment, and we will move on to the next part of the agenda, please.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
All right, colleagues, the desk is clear. Any announcements, colleagues, for this weekend? Ms. Hahn?
Well, I just wanted to, again, if people are watching this program and have been impacted by the storm, I just want to make this announcement, that there is a community assistance center, and it's the County Social Services Building on Imperial Highway at Normandy, and the hours are today from 9:00 to 6:00. Tomorrow, it's going to be open from 9:00 to 3:00, it's going to even be open on Sunday from 9:00 to 3:00, and then Monday from 9:00 to 6:00. So Imperial and Normandy, the county building, if you need help, go there. Also, City of Los Angeles, through Lot Cleaning Division, we, our crews will be tomorrow from 8:00 AM till it gets dark, and our lot cleaning crews will be basically canvassing Watts, street by street, neighborhood by neighborhood. If at this time, you believe that you have damaged stuff, that you just know you're going to throw away, that is beyond repair, and you know it can't get in your own container for a regular pickup, if you'll just take it from your garage or your house and put it out on the curb, this is stuff that you know is beyond repair, you just need to get rid of it, our trucks will come and take it, they'll pick it up for you, just set it out on your curb. We know a lot of you probably haven't been able to assess everything yet, I would still be crying on my front porch at this point, but if you know that you'll have stuff later on, we're going to have follow-ups next weekend to do the same thing. So we're trying to help you, if you need to finally get to that carpet and get it ripped out, we're going to help you get rid of the stuff that you know is damaged beyond repair. And again, this is anything, furnitures, boxes, carpet, debris, trash, we're trying to keep hazardous waste from being picked up that day, like paint cans from the garage, but go ahead and put everything out, our crews will assess it, and we'll take away what we can. We're going to try to keep helping you, weekend after weekend, until we can really clean up our community after this disaster.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Perkins?
I want to, I want to thank Ms. Hahn for your diligence and for making sure that at every opportunity, you're reminding people of the resources that are available, unfortunate when these disasters occur. Representing the San Fernando Valley, Wendy and myself, and Greg, and Dennis, and the rest of us who represent the valley, we're very well aware of disasters, but the point that I'd like to make at this opportunity of the day is, there are people in the San Fernando Valley who've actually had to deal with federal agencies because of disasters, et cetera. And my point is, if you know somebody who was a victim of what just occurred a couple of days ago, give them a call, that friend, that colleague at work, or what have you, and give them the strength of the courage to know that they can wade through all of the paperwork or what have you, but there is, you know, there is results that will occur. When we have disasters, sometimes there's millions, sometimes there's billions of dollars that come to our aid, and once again, we just had a debate earlier today about information about communities. Here we have a flash flood that affected a portion of Los Angeles, and for us to be able to have that information, who lives there, how many homeless we have, how many people we have at the poverty level, helps us communicate back to Washington and all of the other levels of government, so they can respond quickly and immediately and give us the appropriate attention that our constituents deserve. So thank you again, Janice, for your diligence, and also, everybody out there in TV land, Channel 35, if you have a colleague at work or a friend or family member who was affected by this disaster in the other part of our city, please call them up, see them tomorrow at work or what have you, encourage them to please do what they have to do to make sure that government does respond to them.
Thank you. Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks? Is that a journey motion or an announcement?
I have a announcement.
Okay.
Sarah, the November 15th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the 8th District, along with Department of Aging, is hosting a senior resource fair at the Epic Center, 3990 South Menlo. A variety of city services will be there, including some county services. We'll have Alzheimer's Association, the Bureau of Sanitation, the Deaf and Disabled Telecommunications Program, the Home Secure Program. It's a free fair, and also, there'll be some entertainment and free parking with lunch.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Today, we got together with the State Park Department, and we are in a position to finally announce the final scenario for the Taylor Yard, 40 Acre Park. Through a series of meetings that began back in August, we entered a unique relationship with the state. with the state, the city, and are literally promoting a scenario that the community has supported. We've worked through a variety of workshops, hundreds of people involved, and it'll be in Cypress Pike Rec Center, Tuesday, November eighteenth, at six-thirty PM, twenty-six-thirty, Pepper Avenue. You'll be able to see the soccer fields, the baseball diamonds, the basketball courts, plus twenty acres of open space that begins the connection to the park, the necklace of parks that could be throughout the river system. So, we invite everyone to come. It's a great, great day. It's ten years in the workings, and it's finally coming to a position where we can finally announce these great opportunities for a very park-poor area. Hope to see you there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Any other announcements, colleagues? Mr. LeBange?
Thank you, members. A lot happening. Tomorrow, though, at the Convention Center will be the Japan Expo. It is our new Council General of Los Angeles spoke of. It also salutes the one-hundred-and-fiftyth anniversary of our relationship with Japan as far as trading and business throughout that time. And also, it's a good time to learn all about what is going on and the opportunity for business and activity. A little later on in the morning, after you go to that expo, you could come to the Franklin Avenue Bridge, that historic Merrill Butler Bridge built in the nineteen-twenty-six era. We're underneath it a dedication of a beautifully improved landscaping project that is community-driven by the Franklin Avenue, excuse me, Franklin Hills Neighborhood Association, as a wonderful event which you could go and enjoy and do the good thing.
Thank you very much, Mr. LeBange. Two announcements from Council District Thirteen, colleagues. This Sunday, as part of our ongoing program to highlight local artists, in my field office at three-five-two-five Sunset Boulevard, at seven PM, we will have, in conjunction with Gallery Domingo, the opening of a new exhibition of local artists, and we encourage people to join us on Sunday. And for those pop music aficionados out there, eleven-thirty on Monday, Britney Spears will be getting a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. We invite the members of the public and from other places to come out. In an attempt to boost ratings for Channel Thirty-Five, we'll see if we can't get that on TV as well. And Mr. Zine was asking about colleagues. I think anybody who's name ends in something between A and Y should come down. Any adjourning motions, colleagues? Please rise for adjourning motions. Mr., sorry, Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. LeBange.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know Councilmember Zine will want to comment, as well as he mentioned earlier in the council meeting, one of our wonderful police officers unfortunately has passed away, Tim Falco. He passed away November eleventh, two thousand and three, in a sudden and tragic hunting accident while on vacation in the city of New York. Tim was a proud member of the Los Angeles Police Department for the past twenty years. He was a motor officer in the San Fernando Valley and was then promoted to be a senior lead officer in the Foothill area. Most recently, Tim was assigned to Labor Relations. He was born in Portchester, New York, on March ninth, nineteen fifty-nine, and will be laid to rest tomorrow in New York. A funeral mass will be held at nine-thirty AM at Saint Vito's Roman Catholic Church in Mamaroneck, New York, with interment at Greenwood Union Cemetery in Rhine, New York. A memorial service for all of Tim's extended California and LAPD family is being scheduled for a later date. Details are pending at this time, and we will share that with you when those details are known. He is survived by his wife Catherine, his daughter Lindsay, son Timothy, brothers Mario and Jimmy, and his mother Marjorie. I have to tell you, I received so many emails and calls from people wanting to make sure that we knew that this wonderful officer had passed away, that he would be sorely missed in Los Angeles, was a special, had a special place in our Foothill Division, and was an extraordinary senior lead officer. So, he will, we be missed, and we send our condolences and thoughts and prayers to his family on this tragic day.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel, and Mr. Carters on that as well. Anybody wishing to be heard on that, that one? Let's put all members on that.
Tim worked for me at Valley Traffic, and he was a good friend. He was the kind of an officer who would give that hundred-and-ten percent effort. He had that captivating smile. And certain people in life really touch your heart, their professionalism, their dedication to duty. And Tim was that type of officer. And when he left Motors, he went to Foothill as a senior lead. And as Councilmember Parks knows, seldom do motor officers ever leave that job because they like that motorcycle, they like that duty. And Tim was so dedicated to people. And I remember seeing him at Foothill and running into him from time to time, and he was just so excited about his job and working with the people. And then of recent, going to Labor Relations, which is a very prestigious assignment, working with the labor movement in Los Angeles and making sure that problems don't occur when there's issues on labor strikes, et cetera. But he was just one of those very unique people in our world, in our society, and a very special member of the LAPD. While we have tremendous members of the LAPD, Pete really, Pete, Tim, Tim Falco really, really stood out as one of a very unique group of dedicated people, serving the members of Los Angeles, the residents. And it just, when I heard yesterday, I got an email on his passing, it was shocking. He was a young man, a family man, very, very dedicated, and then I was going to make arrangements for the services and learned this morning that the services are in New York tomorrow. And as the captain stated earlier, that a number of senior leads are flying to New York for the services. He was that type of individual where people would fly across the country for the services, for memorial services. And I know we're going to be having a memorial in Los Angeles, and I'm sure there'll be a tremendous turnout, not only members of law enforcement, but of the community, because he touched a lot of hearts in the city of Los Angeles. May Tim Falco rest in peace.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Anybody else on that one? Okay. Mr. LeBange?
Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Marguerite Casper, who lived to be ninety-one years old. For many of those years, she lived in Silverlake. She had two wonderful sons, Creighton and Garth, and she was a very good woman, a good member of the Motherhood Council Parish Church at the time, Marguerite Casper.
Thank you very much, Mr. LeBange. Mr. Ludlow?
Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Johnny Thomas. I know that Councilmember Parks joins me in this. She passed in her sleep Monday, November third. She was sixty-one years old, been a resident of Los Angeles for fifty of those years. She lived recently in the Tenth Council District for the last five years. She was mother of Anthony Thomas and Medris Thomas Johnson. She was also survived by her brother John Danny Scott and her sister Tonya Scott. She didn't go to college herself, but she saw to it that both of her children did. She would be remembered as a woman who loved life and family, and above all cherished her two children. Her passing is especially sad because this week she was expecting her first grandchild. So, we ask that we adjourn in memory.
Mr. LeBange?
I know Anthony, and he was a deputy mayor for Mayor Ridden, in charge of South Los Angeles. And later on, I know he worked closely with Janice at Southern California Edison, and now he's working for the city of Los Angeles in Sacramento. So, I think it would be nice to, one second.
We'll get Councilmembers Hahn and Mr. Parks, I believe, is going to be on that. Mr. LeBange and Ms. Mary. Let's do all members. Go ahead, Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask us to adjourn in memory of Anita Lugo King, the wife of the late Celeste King III. They were married for sixty-two years. In fifty-one, she along with her husband and her father-in-law started the King Baile Bonds Agency. She had some unique abilities managing the business, also volunteering for a variety of community organizations and political activities. But foremost, she was the mother of four children and also a person that had informally adopted a number of children. In nineteen sixty-three, she became an active member of the Republican Party, a member of the Central Republican Committee in California, and a delegate to the National Convention. She's a pioneer in developing and founding the California Black Republican Council, in which she was the state chair. She was appointed by Governor Duke Magin, President George Bush, to a number of organizations. And she passed away just recently on November the eighth. The viewing will be at Inglewood Cemetery on the sixteenth, at two-thirty. She was, it would have the services held on Monday, November seventeenth, at Inglewood Cemetery at the Manchester Chapel at eleven. She leaves her three of her children, eight grandchildren, and thirteen great-grandchildren.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Ms. Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that thinking, Mr. Chair, that Mrs. King and her family had significant ties to the Ninth Council District, as well as they managed the Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue from the late nineteen fifties to the mid nineteen sixties, and was very involved in the refurbishment of the hotel at the time it was owned by her husband's uncle, James Nelson. But I also wanted to note that in the last year, her daughter took her out frequently to community events, and while I know she missed her husband much, she was always, always had a smile and kind words, and I know that they appreciated when people would come up to her and remember her. So, I'm really pleased that we're joining today to remember her life and her contributions to our community.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. We adjourn in memory of Dr. Daniel Levigna. Doctor was born May nineteenth, nineteen forty-one, Cleveland, Ohio. Was one of the pioneer doctors at Encino-Tarzana Regional Medical Center. The doctor received his medical degree from Ohio State University and traveled to Tarzana since nineteen ninety-eight. He's been at that hospital. The doctor was an anesthesiologist and a resident of Tarzana. Dr. Levigna obtained his private pilot license in nineteen eighty-three and went on to receive his twin-engine pilot license. He passed away on Sunday, November second, when his vintage T-33 Silver Star plane crashed into a mobile home park in Canyon Country. He was much loved by his family and friends. Don't be greatly missed by all. He is survived by his wife Patricia, children Catherine Marie, Laura, Daniel, Michael III, Carol Elizabeth, his mother Wilma, sisters Marie Harlan and Wilma Wall, brothers William and Robert, parents-in-law Eugene and Miriam Shemorhan. May Dr. Daniel Levigna rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. And before we call the roll, colleagues, I just want to thank you this week for your down-to-earth bare minimum for everybody's attendance and diligence in being here and making things run smoothly. With that, have a good weekend, and please call the roll.